Earlierly scheduled mayor council meeting, we are meeting on Tuesday, November 12th, 2024 due to the Veterans Day holiday. Commemorate everybody that serves in our armed forces and those that have served. With that, please join us in a moment of silence followed by the schedule of the evening.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on our agenda this evening is the approval of the consent agenda.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to separate out the work session, I believe it's that one of 10:30. Yes, with the delegation to approve that separately due to the absence of two council members.
Okay. Is there a motion? So the motion by council member Horace to pull out the work session? So I have a motion by council member Horace to separate out the work session minutes from October 30th, 2024, and a second by council member Nichols, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, let the record reflect the demotion to move the work session minutes from 10:30 out of the consent agenda but approve unanimously with all council members present. Up next is the approval of the consent agenda amended, item 1A, sub item 1 and 2.
What should we approve?
We just took those out. We are approving, we're going to approve the consent agenda with items 1 and 2, so the closed session and the regular session.
Right.
So I have a motion by council member Horace.
Second.
Second by council member Nichols, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, let the record reflect that the consent agenda approving the closed session minutes of 10:24 and the regular session minutes of 10:28 passed unanimously with all council members present. Up next is the work session minutes for 10:30. So I have a motion by vice president Burrell. Second by council member Ner, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, let the record reflect that the vote is abstained. You were abstaining as well, right?
Well, we were.
Right, that's what I'm saying. So I'm just trying to get a sense. Approval by council member Green, vice president Burrell, council member Ner, abstention by council member Horace and council member Nichols due to their absence. All right, up next is agenda item 2A, citations for years of service on the Parks Commission. So we have Mike Wiley and Sarah Cooper will have you both come up if you don't mind, we'll do this together. Thank you both, I appreciate it. I think we're going to come right over here, just be careful with the cord if you don't mind. So these read very similarly, but before we get to the text of it, I do want to say thank you to both of you for your years of service to the Parks Commission. I know that there've been a couple, I think it was your last go around, you said, hey look, we'd really like to kind of step away, but you agreed to help with the transition of the knowledge that both of you bring to the Parks Commission and serve in the capacity of a one-year term, I think we even squeaked out to about one and a half, but we really, really appreciate your service to the Parks Commission. So before we even get to that, let's give them a huge thank you. All right, so then I'm going to read the official citations and they're virtually the same, so I'm just going to read one, I have a lot to read this evening. So we congratulate and thank Sarah and Mike for more than 20 years of service in the Parks Commission for the town of Berlin. Parks Commission serves as a volunteer heart of the town of Berlin's parks and recreations. Without the service and civic-minded citizens like Sarah and Mike, we would not have the strong partnership we have today, especially noticeable through programs such as the Cleanup Berlin Day, Take Pride in Berlin Week, and the overall aesthetics and amenities that we have in our town parks today. Therefore, I, Mayor Zach Tindall, and the council of the town of Berlin, on behalf of the citizens of the town, do honor and thank you for your service to our Parks Commission and unwavering dedication to our community. So thank you both so much. Mike, can I get you to this side if you don't mind?
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you both again. Thank you.
And Mike, thank you for your military service as well.
Thank you. And volunteer service in the welfare center all the time. I always think that's to do with Mike, somebody stop by, had great things to say about Berlin. All right. Up next is agenda item 6B, this is proclamation 2024-12, recognizing November as Veterans and Military Families Month. So proclamation of the mayor and council of the town of Berlin, recognizing Veterans and Military Families Month, whereas November is a time by tradition for family celebrations, it is also a month in which we set aside time to honor our veterans and military families by recognizing their sacrifices and celebrating their successes. And whereas, as we recognize November as Veterans and Military Families Month, we thank military families for the tremendous contributions they make in support of our service members, their mission, our state, and the nation. Whereas the contributions and sacrifices of members who served in armed forces have been vital in maintaining our freedoms and way of life, our veterans are brave and selfless individuals who, when the duty called, willingly put themselves in harm's way to defend the lives and liberty of all of us. Whereas, as we approach the winter holiday season, when families across Maryland come together, we pay special tribute to the deployed forces and their families. And whereas the dedication and strength of military families during the sustained high operational tempo, increased deployment, and long separations is an inspiration to all of us, the state of Maryland, the town of Berlin understands that families also serve and we honor and pay tribute to them as well. Whereas we recognize and honor the town of Berlin's veterans and all military families who support our armed forces as they protect our state and our country. Now therefore, I, Mayor Zach Tindall, and the town council of the town of Berlin, hereby proclaim November as Veterans and Military Families Month in the town of Berlin. So thank you. Thank you to everybody that served. And we do have several staff that have served as well, including our town administrators, so thank you so much for your service.
Thank you so much.
All right, let's see. Up next is a statement of support for the Guard and Reserve, and that is what we have here with us this evening. So I will, do you need to read this or can we just? You wanted to say a couple words about this, Kelsey, and then we'll take a picture together?
Oh, please, super brief. So ESGR usually attends conferences, especially ones related to HR, because they like to, you know, discuss our policies and make sure we're up to date in ensuring that our policies are sufficient and favorable to our military staff. So I have been in communication with them on ways we can update our policies, and because of that, they said, you know, we appreciate that you guys are trying to show support for your Guard and Reserve, so they asked if we could present this this month and show that we are supportive of that. And we are still working together to, you know, see ways we can improve our policies.
So with that, handbook review and things that we just adopted, but really just making sure that they're in line with the types of benefits that are unique to service members, whether they're Guard or whether they're active duty, so. All right, let's take a picture together, Kelsey. All right, so up next is a proclamation 2024-15, and this is recognizing November as Municipal Government Works Month. This is part of our work that we do with the Maryland Municipal League as well, and we do this each year in November. Proclamation of the mayor and council of the town of Berlin for Maryland Municipal Works Month, whereas the town of Berlin was incorporated in 1868, and Maryland is known to 157 municipalities, and whereas municipal government represents the most responsive level of government, allowing citizens to have direct access to their elected officials, and whereas in an effort to educate citizens about municipal government and the importance of their participation, the town of Berlin is proud to promote municipal government awareness, and whereas municipalities have enhanced the quality of life for their respective residents, maintaining natural and historic sites and structures, helping to make Maryland a great place to work, play, and explore, and now therefore we have proclaimed that the mayor and council of the town of Berlin, Maryland hereby joins the Maryland Municipal League in declaring November as Municipal Government Works Month in the town of Berlin. So thank you to really everybody that we have on the periphery, our department heads, our town staff, all of you in the audience that come and participate in our public meetings, that's what really Municipal Government Works Month is about. So thank you for that. All right, so let's see. Up next is agenda item 3A, which is a recommendation for approval for the Arts and Entertainment Committee. You'll see this on page 21 of your packet, recommending the reappointment of Sarah Hamberry, Opal Hamberry, as our youth representative, and then Cassandra Brown. Cassandra is also the chair currently of the AAD Committee. So agenda, this is motion 2024-64 seeking approval for those nominees. Motion to approve. So I have a motion by council member Horace. Second by council member Ner, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, let the record reflect that the three Arts and Entertainment reappointments asked unanimously. With that, we will have Sarah, Opal, and Cassandra join me up front, and we're going to do the oath of office. So raise our right hand and repeat after me, and then when I say aye and then a blank, you fill in your names, all right? So I.
Cassandra.
Sarah.
Do swear and affirm.
Swear and affirm.
You can do it all at the same time. After the names, you can do it all at the same time. Then I will support.
I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And that I will.
And I will.
Be faithful and bear true allegiance.
Be faithful and bear true allegiance.
It's only some time. To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
With the best of my skill and judgment.
With the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Serve as a member of the town of Berlin.
Serve as a member of the town of Berlin.
Oh, got it. According to the Constitution and laws of the state.
According to the Constitution and laws of the state.
Congratulations. But we'll make an exception, right? Cassandra, Opal, and Sarah. There we are, and if we need another pen, do we need one more? Right, sorry. And then do we have an initial down at the bottom right for the terms? Right, if you don't mind, something? Perfect, and then I'll follow that. That's okay. And then just make one.
All right, along with the arts.
There we are. And let's see. And Sarah, and then Cassandra, can I have you to the other side just so we balance that out a little bit?
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you both. Or all, actually.
Okay, you need it.
Oh yes, sorry about that, I gave them away. That's what happens when we have a six o'clock meeting, I start to get the papers right in. All right, let's see. I think I get a break now. Up next is agenda item 3B, motion 2024-65, and this is Spray Site A Motor Repair Funding Request, and our finance director Natalie Slade is going to report.
Good afternoon, it's a motion to approve the receipt with repairs of Spray Site A. I'm doing this on behalf of Jamie Latcham, and he has given me all the details. Apparently on the Leigh Road, Spray Site A, there is an emergency repair is needed. The details of the repairs, cleaning, reusing the head shaft, blasting and painting the discharge head, reworking the spathing box, furnishing new flinch stop and intermediate columns, providing new stainless steel hardware and line shafts, installing new rubber bearings, reworking the motor, and inspecting its component. So this repair was not budgeted, so it's considered an emergency repair. The funding to support that repair will come from poller fees, and there is a little description out there on the financial impact. As of right now, as of today, we have collected $290,000. There are several projects that have been allocated of fiscal 25 budget already been funded by the poller fees, and they amounted over $175,000. So we have a reserve or available funds to be expensed for something else under this wastewater fund of $115,000. So we ask you to approve the repairs, which will be $45,925 is an estimate, so around $46,000.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. Any questions for Natalie?
If there are no questions, I leave to approve the public.
Oh yes, thank you. Good idea. All of the items for approval do have a public comment period before approval, so if no questions from the council, we'll open up the public comment regarding motion 2024-65. Seeing none, we'll take action by the council. I believe vice president Burrell made a motion to approve.
Second.
Second by council member Horace, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, let the record reflect that motion 2024-65 passed unanimously. Thank you, Natalie and Jamie.
Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is agenda item 3C, motion 2024-66. This includes two items, and it's for our Reconnecting Communities Agreement, Reconnecting Communities and Neighborhood Grant. With that, before we start, I do want to recognize Patty. Maybe just wave at everybody so that we know who Patty is. Patty and Sarah have run point on really applying for the grant. Once again, that's a $1.2 million grant that will include evaluating how we can reconnect our neighborhoods across the divide of 113, so everybody together, but really overcoming that highway in a safe way. It also includes construction funds for the Broome Bike Way project, or the Rails and Trails project that we're all working on, so it does have some funding in that as well. So in a nutshell, the MOU and the U.S. Department of Transportation Agreement, two items that we're going to have before us this evening. The MOU is between the town of Berlin and State Highway Administration, so if we were to try and navigate the federal process on our own, that's a very complex process, right? It requires a lot of, a lot of new learning for us, because it's rare that we get direct federal dollars in the forms of grants. Usually the money that we get, even if it comes through a federal level, is usually a pass-through through the state, so we're working with the state agency in that process. So what we've done here is tried to alleviate some of the complexity by partnering with the State Highway Administration. So these two documents, Patty and Sarah correct me if I'm wrong, the item C2 is the U.S. Department of Transportation Grant Agreement, and what that does is it's a three-way agreement between federal highway administration, the state highway administration, and the town of Berlin. And it says that since the town of Berlin, in a nutshell, says that since the town of Berlin is the grant recipient, we want to then partner, but really give more substance to the paperwork side to the State Highway Administration. So it says that we all agree to that first, and the federal highway administration's worked with us on the material for it. And then the MOU really specifies between us and State Highway, who's going to handle what components, right? So it's broken into three phases, those three phases don't need to be accomplished sequentially, because I think item three is the Bike Way project, which would really be kind of run simultaneously with phase one. So that's what those three, those two documents do. I realize it's a lot to take in, so I will take any questions or dialogue that the council has to help kind of make that easier for everybody to understand before we get to the approval process.
Yeah, so, okay, so the total grant is 1.2 million.
That's correct.
Okay. So we are, the town of Berlin would be the project folks, so we would be kind of coordinating all this. So I guess my question is, how much of the 1.2 is for the planning of the access across 113, and how much is going to be going to the Berlin Bike Way?
Do you have the page number on that? It's in the, it specifies that.
There it is, isn't it?
Yep, it has it.
I'll do the page number.
Because it should have the.
All I see is the total 1.2.
Right, so a general split of it, just for the kind of working numbers, is about $1 million for the planning side, about $200 for the bikeways, but then you have like the project management piece, because it will take a project manager to like facilitate this, and the amount of money that we have factored in for like supplies for the public hearings and the public meetings and stuff, so that people can have visual aids and really see what we're talking about. That will come out of more than likely the $1 million side of things. So do we have the exact page number on that?
59.
Are we saying 59 of the packet?
Oh, sorry, 59 of the packet, yeah, I believe.
I think you're in the right location, Steve. So that kind of gives us a summary of what goes where.
So 250 for planning, 350 preliminary design.
And these are rough.
Yeah, no, of course. So.
It's page 59 and a 1 on 4.
Okay. So we're at phase one planning, approximately 250,000.
We're really, we're really not even at that yet.
Okay, so we're pre-phase one.
Yeah, that's, this agreement gets us on our way to phase one.
Well, I just want to make sure that we're clear, because we've got a lot of things going on.
But that's why, that's why I want to make sure everybody's comfortable with where we're at and what we're getting ready to do.
It leads me to my other question when it comes more to the nitty-gritty of the funding part of this, because I want, I would like to be clear, we're going to talk about the ARPA rails and trails money that's there right now, but I also want to touch base on what we've asked the county for repeatedly the past couple of years.
Yep, it's in there.
Well, but if we have this, are we still going to need to ask the county for that money?
We've already asked them for that money, and they've already said yes.
For FY '25?
Yep, for this, uh, yes.
This is, this is, so for our request for FY '26, it's going to be like right around the holidays.
It will not include, it will likely not include Rails and Trails Fund, or Berlin Bike Way funding request.
Okay. So then that 136 or whatever, we will not see in our request, or whatever it is?
The, so we asked, right, so just so that we're all on the same page, we asked the county commissioners to chip in a portion of the Rails and Trails funding for two years. They said yes, contingent on the grant. The grant was the MDOT Bike Ways Grant, we did not receive it, or we received this grant in blue, and we said if we get, can we apply the grant funds of this that we didn't expect to get, for the ones that we didn't get, which was the MDOT Bike Ways program? And they said yes, but we need to use it this year. So the grant opens up in the spring, and we are already working, we've had the conversation with State Highway, that that is the first thing that we are working on in conjunction with setting up the community meetings and stuff for the separate side of this grant, which is the planning side of the Reconnecting Communities and Neighborhoods. Because the Rails, the Railroad Bike Way project is really like a backbone, right? And it's going to potentially tie in, once all this is done, it'll tie the north to the south, from Berlin to Snow Hill, and I know this takes it a little bit further, but we're also pursuing, thanks to Patty and Sean, an idea with Snow Hill and the commissioners, that we would use grant funding to study and get everything we need in place that would use the Bike Way that we're building here to connect to Snow Hill. It would say, this is how you need to do it, this is what it would cost, and then it gets us toward a construction grant. I know it's more than you asked, but that's all.
Right, so are we going to be asking the commissioners for money for Rails and Trails?
I answered that a moment ago, no.
Okay.
Likely, no.
Likely, no, okay. And then my final question on that is, is the Berlin Bike Ways path the same that we saw as a draft two or three years ago, down from Heron Park, across Main, behind the fire company, down west-ish?
That is not changed.
Okay. So it is the same. So then again, I'm just going to say, interestingly saying it, is that there are stormwater concerns in several of those areas that I'm just putting in everyone's radar again for the design and the planning of this.
So the nice part about this, in order for us to really get where we need to go, all of those, we'll need a stormwater plan for the portion that's going to be designed. So we'll have that all addressed before you even apply for the grant.
Let's go around.
All right.
Thank you.
Any additional questions?
Yeah, so I see there's a schedule for kind of like completion dates, which pushes it out to 2026.
Those are the longest.
Right, but it's a long project.
It can be, yes.
What is the intent to execute this? Is there going to be a committee?
There will be, yes. So there's actually a couple phases, right? So the Bike Way project likely not going to include a committee, right? But it does include like partnerships, so the Greenway and Trails Master Plan that the county just did, this is part of it, right? Our planning side that we're going to do with the Reconnecting Communities and Neighborhoods, it's going to tie into hopefully the Greenways and Trails Master Plan, which is like the 611 Trail and things of that nature, right? So we're trying to make sure that Berlin's plan is not just Berlin, right? We want it to fit into the larger pedestrian flow throughout most of the county. So with that, the planning side, right, will include a committee of folks that'll work together. We have not determined what that committee is yet, but yes, it will likely include a committee. And it'll likely have two council members on it, like we have in Russ County.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, it has to have community members, so.
I just don't want us to lose sight. I mean, I think that this is great for the bicycle path and whatnot, I just don't want the connection of Berlin to get lost in, or even become a secondhand, a second thought to this Rails and Trails, not called the Berlin Bike Ways, which is going to eventually connect Berlin with Newark and Snow Hill and whatever else. I want to make sure that we keep the reconnecting of Berlin as a top priority.
Exactly, and those have to be, right? Because they're defined in the.
Oh, I understand that, I just don't want it to be, I don't, I know that this Rails and Trails and the Berlin Bike Paths is major, and it's something that we've been hoping and planning for, for ages, but at the same time, one of the bigger parts, one of the bigger reasons that we got this is the reconnection, so I don't want the reconnection to become like the afterthought.
I agree, 100%.
And it's clearly defined as two separate.
Oh, I see that, I just don't want it to be, again, the afterthought. We could put all of our, the bulk of our time and energy into the one, and this one just becomes, yeah, we got to get this done too, because we have to.
Well, do keep in mind that as far as the reconnecting portion goes, this grant is for design and planning.
Right.
Not resulting construction.
For sure.
Just to, just. This grant won't result in construction.
If you have ever driven to Crispfield, you can see this, this actually has taken place in Somerset County, and it is a wonderful thing to see how a bike path starts virtually at 13, and it runs the length of 413 to Crispfield. It is a wonderful.
No, we'll have delegate Otto correct, well corrected me originally, we were calling this Rails and, oh.
Rails, two trails.
Rails and Trails.
And that's the conversion of a railroad.
We were calling it that, and delegate Otto goes, we're not doing that, right? We're keeping the railroad, I said, we are, we are keeping the railroad. He said, do you mind calling it Rails and Trails? So we've kind of gotten away from that entirely, we've just called it the Broome Bike Way project, but yes, to your point, we are not taking the trail, the railroad up, but we do have a great partner in the Maryland Delaware Railroad, and they are, I would say that they're very optimistic about this, this idea.
So actually, just one more, I was trying to be quiet tonight, but, but, so.
Hey, work him, go ahead.
I have a New Year's resolution coming up. So just from the Bike Way part to the bridge, the access across the highway part, when we say bridging the highway or bridging the.
We're using it metaphorically.
Yeah, I was going to say, is that like a envisioning a little bridge, a crosswalk?
What we did, in order to get a project. What we did, in order to get a project like this across the finish line, you have to make it pop off the page, right? So the narrative has to be solid. Most people might only read the title, right? And then some folks might make it to you a little bit of a narrative, but very few are going to read the whole darn thing, right? So we wanted something that was catchy, that really brings your attention to what the heck's going on here, so we used the playoff words, but, okay. All right. Patty, anything you want to add?
I think Mary clarified that this is, this grant is not construction. It's, the 100% will get us to 100% design, which will allow us to apply for the next set of construction. And to Councilwoman Nichols' point, the federal grant was precipitated on addressing an infrastructure barrier, which is 113. So believe me, our federal partners that we talk with every week and our state highway partners are not going to let us forget that, because that is the purpose of the reconnecting communities grant funds, is to address a barrier that separates communities, so it's...
Well, just, and I, and I, the hope is that that's really what's happening and I believe that wholeheartedly, I just know that there are a lot of people that are thinking, with hearing these two spoken about in the same sentence, that the latter would be wa, wa, watered down, for lack of a better term, you know what I mean, and just an afterthought, even though that was what jumped off the page.
And the other point to make is that with the, what Mayor said, we, we had a meeting with the towns of Snow Hill, county commissioners, the railway line people, MDOT people back in February, just to plant the seed and explore the possibility of that Berlin to Snow Hill connection, because that's a, that's a long, big drain, big heavy lift that will require lots and lots of processes, but if you don't start thinking about that, and while we've got all these federal highway and state highway people paying attention and, and here milling about with their, you know, engineers, having that as a potential future point, it keeps that in, in the scope as the, you know, where will the bike way trail go? Will it, will it go exactly to Evans Road where the initial design went, or will it go a little bit different because the crossing of 113 might be at a different location? So if you're not looking at all three pieces at the same time, and as well as the Greenway and Trails Plan, which looks at a path along Assateague Road to get to 611, if you're not kind of looking at the big picture while you concentrate on the micro parts, then, then they won't line up at the, at the time. So it's a heavy lift to keep, you know, and, and a lot of complexity, but I'm absolutely certain from the conversations that we've had with the town staff, with the state highway people and with the federal highway, that we're, we know that the critical issue, the number one goal is to solve the safety issue of, of getting across 113.
And just to know how clear we are, I said to, to our partners, right, Sean Winkler and Cheryl from State Highway, I said to them at the very early onset, we're friends now, but I'm going to be a squeaky wheel. And I said, as a matter of fact, we just got our little flags, and I said, I'm sending you, I was going to send them a three by five. I said, I'm sending you a flag for the town of Berlin, I want you to hang it in your office. I want you to think about Berlin the second you come in, and I want you to think about Berlin the second you leave. So we're, we're not letting them off the, trust me. All right, and Patty has volunteered her time in her capacity on, with the Worcester County Bicycle and Pedestrian Coalition. She's been on every single one of our calls, she's been a huge asset to the town of Berlin. Without her and without Sarah, we would not have this funding at all. I'm very certain of that, so, thank you both.
You're welcome.
All right, I do need, any other questions from the council, we'll open up the public comment. Public comment on motion 2024-66, which does include sub item 1 and 2. Okay, yes, just come forward, name and street name if you don't mind.
All right, Jayden Johnson, 363 Scream Lane.
You can adjust that microphone, I just push it down when we do the pictures.
You're good, no worries. All right. My question is about the time span of this. So I see that there are three phases with the final design completion date being 2030. Do they expect the design to take six years? I mean, that kind of seems like a long time, and then you have to build the thing, and that's going to take even longer. Are we expecting one bridge to take 15, 20 years to complete?
So the way that this works is, these are the longest possible timeframes we can have. They're obviously not our timeframes, but it's how long the federal government says you have to complete the project.
Okay.
So, but there, we of course would like that to happen much more quickly.
I think that like financing, a car, you can take out a loan for 60 months, but you can pay it soon.
Exactly, that's a good point.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment regarding motion 2024-66? All right, seeing none, we'll take action by the council.
Motion approved, 2024-66.
Thank you. A motion by Councilmember Nurse, second by Vice President Burrell, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Let the record reflect the motion 2024-66, passage unanimously with sub item 1 and 2. Thank you both.
Thank you.
All right, up next is agenda item 3D. Do we have by any chance the, um, the information that I sent out earlier printed? I don't even have sent it to you. Does everybody have a printed copy?
Did you give me the made copy?
No, no, I have it digitally, that's why I brought my computer.
I didn't make the copy, I did my own.
I made copies.
Do you want me to make a copy?
Do you need copies? Do you, do you have a copy? Well, okay, yes, can we have a couple, we're ahead of schedule, so we've got plenty of time. Why don't we have like a...
We don't have plenty of time. We don't have plenty of time, because time is in our time circle.
We have plenty of time.
Steve, site plan.
Sarah.
And the cost estimate?
Those, those are the... Yes, I said I was going to...
Please, I'm waiting.
Thank you.
For everybody.
I have.
I don't know, I'm going to, please, if you don't mind.
Okay.
No problem. I'm going downstairs because I collect, but I...
You're just going. Um, let's see, so we're going to come back to item 3D, let's move on to agenda item four, the update on the ARPA fund. Natalie, you're in a little bit.
So in the packet, you have several pages and all we need really to look at the summary page of ARPA expenses, which is fiscal 23, 24, and as of today, 25. The, the back of it, I'm sorry Kate had to print it because it was my entire Excel spreadsheet.
Can you do the page number that we're working on?
Agenda item number four, it's the very first page.
Eighty-five.
It's on page 84, one of four. I don't have a page number. It's not, I'm sorry. Eighty-five, eight-four. Page eight-four, please.
I do.
So originally, we have received two disbursements from the ARPA grant, and that's pretty much the first column of the Excel spreadsheet. I'm just doing a little rehearsal of what we've allocated the funding in the past. We had total general fund of 553,076 allocated to, I'm not going to go project by project, but you can pretty much see them. For total water fund, we have allocated 1.7 million and total sewer fund, 2 million, and we have stormwater fund allocation of 538,000. The next column is expenses that we paid out from the ARPA fund during fiscal 23. And there is not much, because it was just the beginning of all the projects, all the projects, as you recall, were carried forward from fiscal 23 budget to fiscal 24 and then also to fiscal 25. Fiscal 25, we have some expenditures. We have completed the fire company capital project of 220,000. We also have completed strategic plan for crows under general fund. We have purchased the police model and portable radios, that's under the general fund. For the water fund project, we have completed the smart meter purchase itself, actual meter equipment, but we have not finished the whole entire project for the installation of smart meters, smart meters, so that's carried forward and we're still working on it as of today. The wellhouse number one at the Palatton Avenue is the construction in progress, there's a small expenditure out there and it's still ongoing. The Broad Street left station, as for Jamie, we still have some expenditures coming up, it's not major, I think the project is near the completion. The waste water treatment plant, we have reallocated, and I will go over the details just in a minute, in a minute. Stormwater projects have been completed and we have expensed all of the ARPA funds that we have allocated to stormwater from ARPA grant, and we also received some grants towards the stormwater projects. Now, the stormwater project's not completed in general in entirety, but whatever we have allocated been expensed as of today. So during fiscal 24, we had several ARPA allocations. First was a need to add more funding to the stormwater project. So if you look at little numbers to the right, you have number one and then you have number two. The first one, we have taken from general fund, digitizing of documents and files of 50,000, audio and visual system for the chambers of 50,000, and we had a little bit of leftover in contingency, which was an allocated fund of 39,919. Those were combined and shifted to the stormwater improvements. They're, they're, they were approved by during fiscal 24. So also we have in, allocated the wastewater treatment plan upgrade, which initially was budgeted for a million. We split that and we shifted 500,000 towards the smart meter installation and 530,000 went to the stormwater as well. So the stormwater funding for the projects and the reasoning was, the allocation was needed to complete the projects and the actual grants were not available at the time. To proceed with that, we have to move the ARPA grants. But overall, I think the decision to relocate the stone, the funding from general fund to stormwater was the best priority and the best use of the funds. So as of right now, we still have 922,000 left, but all of those funds are encumbered, allocated, which we have to do it by December 31st of this calendar year, and then we have the full entire year, 25 and 26 to expense them.
We've got two years to finish that.
Right. So I think we're in a good path. I do submit reporting to the government agencies twice a year, because we're a small municipality, we don't require filing quarterly, and I haven't had any questions. The auditors perform the entirety of the details audit, that's why I see all the pages behind, it's in my Excel spreadsheets. And we do require perform a single audit by the independent audit companies, because we expensed more than 750 of federal grants. If you have any questions?
I just want to make sure that we're, we're following. So looking down the right-hand side where it says ARPA funds remaining, the planning funds are still there.
Correct.
And what we do need to do, I don't think as a body that there's any reason we should not be able to use $21,000 and some change to be able to tackle comprehensive planning. I think that's safe.
Truly, it's a matter of...
I think, I'm going to say it's underfunded.
Time to...
Right, yeah, but I mean, between now and 2026, that is a safe expenditure, I believe. The remaining $100 that we have for the strategic plan and the, the item for, and the 64,000 that we have for the rails and trail side, I want to come back to. Natalie, is there any reason to believe the 407,000 and some change that we have in the water fund? You said that is committed, is there anything to believe that we would not spend that appropriately?
I don't think so.
Okay.
The projects are still going, we have reported them as construction in progress for fiscal 24 and going on in 25. I think it would be safe to look at the end of fiscal 25, what, if anything possible left from the suspension of leaders and other projects.
So I think the one thing we really need to be careful of, once we allocate it to a project after this December deadline, can we change it? I don't think we can.
Um...
So we got to really make sure that our expenditures are going to align, and if not, then we will discuss a way that we can make those funds.
I am going to actually make a phone call and ask that specific question, but I do believe because we qualify our, our allocation under general distribution, we should be able to reassign the little leftovers.
Okay, perfect. Now, my next question is the sewer fund, same condition, we believe that those expenditures could be safely expended within the 2026 deadline?
Yes.
Okay. So then I want to come back to the, well, let's start here. Any questions from the council regarding any items outside of $64,000 expenditure or the $100 remain, well, 64,000 remaining or the $100 remaining? Is there any other questions? Okay. So now, the reason that I've asked outside of the fact that the deadline's approaching, the reason I've asked Natalie to, to give us this report is also because I would like us to reallocate the 64,102 and 80 cents and the $100 line item to address parking. We've been working together in the subcommittee to be able to address parking concerns, whether that's repairing lots, whether that's exploring other opportunities for municipal parking lots, either way, 64,200 and some change is not going to really touch where we need to be, it's a safe expenditure like the others, but I would like that reallocated to say, to address parking. I agree.
I agree too. I think, you know, in the strategic plan, parking was an item that I applied as priority of mine, and, you know, we do have six month review coming up, and I think up until now, we have a little bit to show from last summer with efforts that were made to, with signage and talking to merchants about the importance of the church parking lot, but I don't think we have much else.
This is really your line, so you got to have some of the show, Steve.
Exactly, so, I mean, I think they're probably...
We'd give you a big check.
Like you said, the need, I mean, that's probably going to be the most pressing need, I guess, but I, you know, of course also want to realize that that's not addressing the short, the shortage that we all know and live, so I think the paving is going to be, doing, repeating what you mentioned, is going to be a lot more than that, but I think it's a suitable allocation, the reallocation of the funds.
Under the broad scope of parking, realizing that we have the subcommittee discussions that are taking place, supply is where we want to go first.
Yeah.
But we do realize that we also have, the reason I bring up paving is because I want to make sure that there's a couple pathways and that this is broad enough that we can fully utilize it by 2026.
So what would it say?
Parking.
Just general parking?
To address parking, downtown parking.
Okay. So, I mentioned this at the last meeting, this is, I mean, a line that I wanted to talk about, and I do agree that, that parking is a valid use. I do have a question, though, if instead of the full 64, could we do the 60, could we do 60,000 and keep 4,000 for some other ideas that, that I would like to share with the group?
What are that? Well, because the, not to, not to like mislead you, but 64 in our, in our starter discussions really doesn't even get us where we need to be, but for the parking side, but let's hear what else is on the table.
Some of the, some of the things that I've just been thinking about here, you know, I was going to suggest perhaps folding it into the town hall planning complex to invest in our planning department a little bit. We know what, we're learning that what we might need, some more software, some more space, some more things for whoever this new planning director is going to be. I'm throwing out again the audio visual for here, a couple months ago or maybe a year we talked about Chromebooks.
That, that's actually incorporated more into the town hall renovation.
Oh, is, okay, Chris.
And then... Because we had to use the AV budget that was here before and the digitizing files budget before, we lumped that into stormwater to cover the deficit there. So we haven't forgotten about those items, but as Mary noted, we were exploring those in conjunction with town hall.
It makes sense to explore installing AV machines that might then have to be torn out.
Great, okay. Then the other thing, I mean, I'm going to step back a little bit here and I don't think I'm out of my lane when I say this, that I, that I truly, on behalf of District Two and everybody, really appreciate the amount of money and energy stormwater has been getting, the stormwater topic has been getting from, from us the past year, two years or three years, but I think that's, that's awesome. And given the short amount, there's just one little request I would like to throw out is, this is ARPA funds, so it's federal and can be used on private land. is, this is ARPA funds, so it's federal and can be used on private land. There is one area in District Two that is obviously overgrown, blocking a ditch. It is reportedly, through our engineers, it is affecting the areas of Franklin Knoll, Henry's Mill, coming down from Henry's Green, and eventually goes over to West.
Well, we have no situation, all of them.
Yes, yes, we do. This particular area is, I'm not an engineer, but it's maybe eight feet wide if we can just dig it out and reimburse using the ARPA funds. It probably wouldn't cost $4,000.
I don't know. I would have to have the stormwater folks look at it.
We've talked about it. We know where this is.
But we've also talked about... When we say, I want to just add clarity, not discounting it, but when we say digging out a ditch, it's not as simple as digging out a ditch. There are, as Jamie, you've been in meetings, I've been in meetings, Mary, and our stormwater folks, we have to, when they're digging out the ditch, they can't just go deeper or bigger if they want. They have to go to kind of where the ditch was before and they do that by kind of feel.
What?
So I'm just putting that out. I want people to understand that it's not just digging out.
Yeah, I'm not saying go deeper. It's just clogged.
Right, I'm not saying...
Right now, you're saying, is it clogged with trees, like saplings and things growing in there?
No, if you can, I don't have, if you can imagine, okay, I don't know how deep, but ditch comes down, overgrown, ditch continues.
Well, the overgrown part is things growing in there, saplings and stuff.
And this is part of natureway?
It's between Franklin Knoll and Henry's Mill, so we're not quite all clear.
But it belongs to someone.
It belongs to someone. And it goes down to the ditch beside, well, at the end of town.
Yeah, I'm going to tell you this. I don't want to take away from that, but I can guarantee beyond the shadow of a doubt that if we take this route with that ditch, we're going to have to do the same for every ditch, the ditch, Wallace-Purnell's ditch.
I can only hope.
We're going to have to go to Wallace's ditch, we're going to have to go to the ditch that's... I mean, I could probably wait for it, but I don't...
And I can only, and I'm personally Jack saying this.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I can only hope because we cannot, we cannot continue saying that everyone's in the system and not do something to help the system.
For sure.
But those are my ideas for this particular. I'm not slighting parking. I think that's totally valid. Those are just some ideas I wanted to throw out.
Thank you.
So if we consider ditches, could we see what it would cost to partner with if we were, could we, if that were something that we were going to entertain, could we see what the cost would be?
We're still using...
I think the larger question is how do you get that done between now and November, or now and December? You know what I mean? We've been working on that issue with Jack for what, months at least? Several months, trying to find clarity? Because something like that, if it ends up being a town responsibility, we may be able to assist with town folks, but the unknown of who owns it, what precedent it starts, or really, we are doing that due diligence, but we don't have that answer right now. And I would be hesitant to say whether we have it by the end of December.
Mr. Mayor, can I...
Go ahead, Mayor.
The premise is that taxpayer funding should not be spent on private property that's not owned by the town.
That's what Wallace-Purnell was informed...
And that's what we've been telling people since I've been.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah.
And he was providing a possible resource to his staff. I would suggest that this individual or situation that Jack is trying to address be provided that same information.
And I would just like to throw out here, the interim final rule of ARPA states that provides state, local, and tribal governments with wide latitude to identify investments in water and sewer infrastructure that are the highest priority to their own communities, which may include projects on privately-owned infrastructure. And also, it states water and sewer infrastructure may include projects on privately-owned infrastructure and cybersecurity.
My concern is not with the ARPA ruling, but how do we administer this equally throughout the town?
That's my thing too. I think advocacy is well-intentioned, but there, I mean, it's impossible for us to build regulatory equity into this, I think, in a short period of time. I prefer to keep it clean than go with parking. And Jack, you beat it up, you beat Bush, and I think it's valuable, but I also think about Wallace-Purnell, I mean, there's been stories in the newspaper dating back two and a half decades, I think.
Yes.
On Wallace-Purnell. You're going your part for your district for sure, but I think we also as council need to remember the Pandora's Box for others, so.
And we've also, we have, just for everybody's knowledge, when we originally explored this plan in its draft format, we as a body reallocated additional funds for stormwater. So we have moved the needle quite a bit. I mean, how much did we put towards stormwater here? Over a million dollars of our form, it's over 25% of what we got. I'm just saying for everybody's knowledge, so the reason we've been able to talk to stormwater that you mentioned the past couple months really is because we had the funding to do it, right? So we've had the system in place to be able to capitalize on grants and things of that nature. What we're dry on is the action, which is the cash that's needed to be able to move these projects forward. So by reallocating 25% of ARPA funds to stormwater, we've recognized as a body and as a town that that is a key priority.
Right, and I mean, not to get over the point, but situations, this isn't, I'm bringing this one up, yes, but this same funding is available to situations with Mr., the one, Mr. Purnell. So it's, if I understand the precedent you're talking, I understand that, yeah.
I would suggest that the best first step would be to establish ownership of the stormwater facilities in the town and eliminate those questions. If it can't be clearly established today that this is private or this is public, then the town can make a move where appropriate to make it public.
And we're, so there's still... Hold on, just to make sure that we all, hold on, just to make sure that we're all on the same page. To Mary's point, the low-hanging fruit that we can address, we're working on that now, all of us, right? You, me, Mary, Jamie, the engineers, the stuff that we can address now, we're trying to do. Likely what you're going to see in F526 is a funding allocation, stormwater fund, to address the stuff that's not low-hanging fruit. Because the questions keep coming up and to your point about the map, the map's not clear, right? We don't have a clear understanding of, I'm getting a look, but you have circled items where you're like, man, this stuff makes sense and this isn't right, and we want to address those, right? But the only way we're going to be able to do that is probably through some deep research and stuff, and we don't have the ability to do all of that in-house. So some of that will be aligned in F526.
And allocating $4,000 to a project that is ongoing project, I don't think would be a priority because, think about it, if you spent $4,000 today, what would we spend next year and the year after and the year after? So solving this problem with the stormwater ditch right now with ARPA, I don't think, I think it's bigger, it's a bigger plan and it's a bigger project that is ongoing, just like Mayor mentioned, taking ownership. So we have to encumber and allocate the remainder of the funds that you mentioned right now, the $64,100, and assign it to a specific project that will be done and completed. The stormwater project will be forever.
Jack, at one time, we talked about establishing a program in the town that would give grant funds or loan funds to HOAs or individuals that need help with their ditch clearing. And that's something we circled back to, had that conversation in January.
So can we save $4,000 for that?
I would like to say 10. I would like to say 10, just so that everybody's on the same page.
Now, I talked about this, just Jack out there.
Well, we talked about this three fiscal years ago, maybe?
Right, but I don't think that should be ARPA grant.
No, I agree, I agree. That should be stormwater.
It should be a program going forward, just a possibility, like we have an energy fund set up where maybe the citizens can contribute, we can match something as an idea, as a plan, and so we have to fund it to assist somebody.
But part of next year's budget.
Right, part of the fiscal '26 budget. That's not a moment of a decision.
No, you have to establish what the parameters would be for getting such grants to folks. Is it first come, first served? Is it a maximum of $1,000 per applicant? Is it an income-based allocation? There's...
Or is it a match? If you spend 100, we can match 100 up to a certain amount, so this must be...
And that's actually, that reminds me of a program that the town had years ago to assist property owners with sidewalk repair, where we would supply it to half. But there, you just, you have to give thought to it and figure out what the parameters for that award.
So I think I do agree with Steve, making allocation toward parking will keep it all clear.
Can we get a motion? So a motion by Vice President Burrell to reassign $64,102.80 and $100 to the parking line item for the ARPA capital projects, and that'll be under the general categories, the general fund. Motion seconded by Councilmember Green. All in favor, say aye. All in both. Let the record reflect the votes unanimous with moving that line item to parking. Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next is a re-visit to our item 3D, which is motion 2024-77, which is Heron Park, parcel 57, purchase and sales agreement with Coastal Ventures Properties LLC. This is under the approval item, but that is an error actually. This is more a discussion item between the mayor's council. So with that, I send out, we just take one of the stacks?
Yes. With three pages.
Right, so. I feel like we're missing, there's a last page. So, all right. So looking at this, right, you should have one document that looks like this, that's the road, right? We should have one other item that is an email, all right? The other item is an estimate of how much it might cost to build the road. And then this item here is just the same as what's in the email. The email is actually cleaner. So we're going to tackle these items one by one in the email, all right? And the first item is the timeline for the projects, the timeline of projects will be in use and fully backed on the tax rolls for the town. Ideally, I think that we would like to have the project up and running and back on the tax rolls in 24 months. But I wanted to get a sense of the council, whether you were in agreement with that, if it should be longer, shorter.
Why wouldn't it be when the project's conveyed?
Well, the conveyance would take place when the contract's signed and after the due diligence period. What we're saying is, when do we want the project filled out and back on the tax rolls, redone?
Well, I thought the minute you transfer ownership to...
It would go on the tax rolls, but what we're saying is like in its redone state, so it doesn't sit either.
So we think put them on a schedule?
That's what we're, what we're saying is we want that occupied and live and active within 24 months.
That's how I interpreted what they said.
So you don't want, so the tax would start within 24 months?
I missed it in my note to all of you. Take the word tax out of it. We want it operationally and functionally. Certificate of occupancy. Certificate of occupancy within 24 months.
As soon as the property is sold from government to private, it goes down to tax.
They start paying taxes. That was my error.
The full time potential can be...
Sorry, I apologize.
Until it's developed.
So I'm a little concerned about putting a timeline on them when nature had it, because you're saying actually have it full.
Well, that it's, the shell and everything is capable of being rented. We're not saying somebody needs to be in the door, but we don't want it sitting in its current condition.
Oh, no, okay, that's clarity, that's clear, because...
So ready to appear as a...
Yeah.
There you are, ready for it.
Right, okay, that's, because that's obviously drive around town. There's a lot of space right now available, not in historic, not in downtown district, but elsewhere. But I'm just concerned about putting them, some sort of restraint on them, because that's when rent prices start getting dropped, you know, that sort of thing, so.
We just don't want it sitting in its current state. Do we think, now, language obviously needs to be cleaned up, but is 24 months reasonable? Everybody believe?
So there's nothing on a line that would cause delay for them to be, do their thing, they should be ready to go.
Correct. Keep in mind, this is after the due diligence period. This is them taking ownership of the property, we just end working on their reconstruction.
Mayor, perhaps you could address a little more of what the due diligence period might entail.
So the due diligence period would be 180 days, and let me get over to, that's spelled out in the draft. It's okay, that's spelled out a little bit more in detail in the draft contract. If somebody gets it on the paper before I do.
It starts on page 77.
The study period is referenced, I think, in contingency, it's item 3. So it talks about, let me see here. Yeah, they're calling it a study period, I think I called it a due diligence period.
It allows time for their traffic study and all those other pieces to be done.
Correct. So it says C attached exhibit B to be incorporated as part of the...
So when, I just have a little question. So when are we actually, when is the date? Are we using August 28th as the date of the sale?
What do you mean?
Well, it sits here in the draft, this agreement made on the 25th day of August.
That's, that was the date I did the draft.
Exactly, the date. So then, if you look at page 83 of the packet, it lists what some of those contingencies would be, with the study period. Yeah, some of that's in there.
So the points that we're talking about tonight.
Yes.
Have these been discussed with the developer as far as, I guess, I'm fine with 24 months following the due diligence because so much is going to take place on that period of time. I just want to make sure what we are saying tonight is not something that's been as unreasonable by the developer.
These have been shared with the developer. We have not gotten feedback on all of the items yet, but they have been shared with the developer.
Right. Yeah, because I'm fine, I mean, I think 24 months sounds good to me, but I don't necessarily...
I think it was in the original agreement back when we talked about this a while ago.
Right.
It was 24 months was in there, I think it got dropped at some point, so.
But again, the 24 months doesn't start until after this 180 days, which is technically, what, six months?
Correct.
Six months of this due diligence period, so in all actuality, I mean, it's really like 30 months.
Right, and I think later, that's six months, my guess, start until after.
180 days and you got six days.
Correct, that's going to be the recommendation. You're getting to the T before we're there. So everybody's in agreement with the 24 months, at least as a starting point for all of us. All right, so the next item, the developers request that the due diligence period or the study period start following the rezoning of the property. Steve, you got to my thunder here. I put in there, we believe that the best way to address this is to not sign the contract until this, with the developer, until the property has been actually rezoned. And handling the things that are really some of the contingencies that we can iron out now before we actually sign an agreement is going to put us in the best possible position.
And we don't think it's going to take two public hearings?
It takes advertisement and a public hearing of planning, an advertisement and a public hearing of...
So we're talking, what's that, another two months?
Well, and we have, keep in mind, we have a moratorium on that currently, until we get a planning director, but we're hopeful that, I mean, we're working diligently, all of you are part of that work, to bring in a planning director, so we're working on it. Now, with that, what I will say that kind of didn't seem right was to us to sign and say we're going to have the rezoning take place and then have to go through the public comment period and basically say, yeah, you got your public comment, but we're not really going to listen because we're going to do it anyway, you know what I mean? So this way, we get to hear the public comment, if there's something we're missing, we get to absorb that information as well before we enter into a contract. So I think it makes it cleaner and it's much, much better that way.
Can we do the public comment while we're in moratorium? Just save it?
No.
Yes, will? Is that?
I would say no. Because we're not, it's not going to get to the planning permission and it's not going to come here.
Because we're not, it's not going to get to the planning commission, and it's not going to come here.
Does the planning commission have their public hearing too?
They're going to have to, but right now, it's a moratorium, so they can't have a public hearing.
I'm just, I need to get the process.
Yeah, we have to look at the calendar to think about it, even though. We hopefully don't meet in December, but maybe not, you know, planning commission. We only meet once in December, correct?
We only meet once in December.
Until January.
I can't speak to whether the planning commission has anything for December.
I'd figure they need tomorrow night, they probably might not be in December, but, yeah.
Could the moratorium be adjusted to allow for certain activities, such as the zoning? We know we didn't want building with plan review, what could it be adjusted to allow for?
I think let's keep it clean, let's see how the next couple of weeks play out, and let's go from there. It'll give us the opportunity to hopefully, I want to be optimistic, maybe fill the seat with a planning director candidate, and then we can have a better holistic conversation about the moratorium, and where this plays in. Alright, let's go to the next item, Steve, you want to kick it off? The roadway to Public Works Skate Park and Heron Park. So this has two real discussion points. So what we did was, we adjusted Steve's highway to nowhere, that had a nice little curve in there and a beautiful rounded bell, might I ask? Nobody wanted to play along with my rounded bell? At times, no.
Every time I see you, I just got a sidewalk.
That's how you all are, it's actually five. It's still got them. It still is, yes, it is five foot sidewalk. If you look kind of up here in the top corner, it'll show you what that road bed looks like, top right corner. It is a 28-foot roadway.
Three foot berm and five foot sidewalk.
And then another three foot area of grass, and then you have a 10-foot easement for utilities on each side. So with that, the previous roadway kind of went into parcel 57 much more. And then this, really, it enters, you can see the lot lines on there a little bit, but once it gets, really, I don't even know, I think it should sneak over a little bit more now that I'm looking at it. But if you're looking at the roadway, once it hits that rear part of the parcel, I'm trying to find the parcel number, 405, I think it is? Once you hit the parcel 405, which is this one right here.
Okay, which one?
Right here. And once you hit the rear of that, that's Cropper's parcel. So what we would like to do is take the roadway and snake it over to parcel 191 and 410, and then hug the lot line with the westerly side of the road and sidewalk in the right of way to just hug the property line going back. So it really gets the roadway over on our side more quickly, opens up some of the barriers for parking and redevelopment of 57. Pardon me. Now, with that, in full disclosure, the developer has requested that the town discuss the possibility of utilizing, so if you're looking at Heron Park, and you're coming in, the driveway that's along Cropper's, that would go back to like the recycling and that old Raines property, that is really a right of way on the parcel that's connected to Cropper's. It allows us access to the Raines property, but it's more like a driveway easement that we have to be able to access that parcel. Because once, keep in mind, Tyson Foods had it all the way around before, the private owner had Cropper's, and it really like landlocked the Raines property. So to keep it from being landlocked, there was that easement or right of way to be able to get back there. The developer here believes that the town should negotiate with Cropper to move the entry point as close as we can to Cropper's parcel, utilizing that right of way that we have currently. Through the due diligence process on our end, looking at that right of way, it is not clear that we can use that as a public road. It says that it allows access to that parcel, but it really doesn't say that we can develop and have the authority to develop a public street.
There was language in older documents that indicated that.
And with that, I wanted to get a sense from this group whether or not we should even start that conversation. Or should we just say, the town knows what it owns, we're going to take 57 as we have it now and get over to 191 as quickly as we can to service our parcels? Or whether you want to take the route of trying to add another part into the negotiation, which is Cropper?
So, that was a question of getting permission from them to use it as a public road.
Um, yes and no, I think it's a little more complex than that, I think they haven't asked. And I think, man, we are terrible here in the town of Berlin, Nightways. We're going cough for cough.
Sorry.
We're going cough for cough now.
I'm breathing out of cough.
I might get to that, I have my tea. So with that.
Look at that, we just scared this.
I know.
We're sorry.
We love you, but, as everybody says, my cough's not contagious, right? Jay, until proven wrong. So, so Jay, to answer your question, I think my understanding, because the message I got back from the developer was, Cropper's is open, right, to this conversation. And in the drawing that I got, Mary, Gaskell, you all were on the same email. If I'm misstating, please let me know. It looked like in us asking for the use of that right of way, what they wanted was then a residential amount, if not maybe a little bit more, in the rear part of their parcel, which is town land.
But they can't use this right of way now.
They can't, well, yes and no. It's a driveway, I mean, but it services their parcel or our parcel, they can use it for that.
As a driveway, not as a park.
Correct, correct. But what I'm saying is, is that I think the understanding of the deal now, I'm getting this through a piece of paper, was that the town could move the road over to Cropper's side, but in return, they wanted the same amount on the rear part of their property, which would encroach on what we're trying to do with Public Works. So, in my sense, that was kind of a no-go, because it kind of takes away from what we're trying to do with that parcel in conjunction. It would put us closer to the skate park, which I don't think is going to look the best aesthetically, so.
If that fence knows, does the town Berlin clear that driveway?
I don't know the answer to that.
I don't know where those lines are drawn.
Because my point is, I just wonder if it's an easement by prescription.
My line's drawn, I mean, I don't know.
I think based off of the research we have done, it is not.
I don't think we do, I think.
I mean, the prescription. Separated versus.
Correct, and to Jay's point, there is a fence there separating the parcels, and that is because it's not meant to service all parcels.
Right.
It's meant to service the Raines parcel, that is it.
We would have never had reason until now to clear snow, and we haven't had a snow event that would test that.
Yeah.
So it's, it's hard to answer.
My understanding of easement by prescription was if it's maintained by a certain period of time by the.
Twenty years.
That it basically becomes the entity who is maintaining it.
It's not just, there are more elements to it than just maintaining it. They have to assert, they have to essentially assert ownership, I guess.
You have to make a claim for it.
Yeah. They have to treat it as it belongs to them for 20 years.
And what I'm saying is, I think we have a path to get it done, whether it's with this developer, however it is, my recommendation would be the same either way. That the roadway that services the skate park, the Public Works facility, whatever we do future use in 410 and the passive use, be a roadway that starts on 57, curves to 191 as quickly as we can by keeping the roadway safe and staying along the property that we have. This, in essence, I don't think that this curves the way that I want it. Because if you see this, I want the road to curve here. So where you have this, I want it to curve over to this point right here.
Like here?
I want the road to curve over and then hug this property line. So I think we just need a mild adjustment to any moratorium on 57. Correct, yes, which is.
Do you agree you should hug any line as much as possible to allow for parking?
But here it doesn't, you see what I'm saying? And I want this to curve over more, and then hug this property line over. And we've already talked internally, these buildings will likely come down in the redevelopment. So they're not an obstacle.
So have you, or someone, talked to the developer about that?
Yes, and I will, and I will say, I've talked to him recently via email about that. He has not, he has said in no.
Clearly stated.
Very clearly stated, that that is not something he is really open to.
What you want.
Well, he wants this road to start on the Cropper's side.
The way this is shown.
Nope, he wants this, this, he wants this over more.
The way this is shown, it runs right at the edge here.
Yep. So that's what he would like. Now, my recommendation is that we don't do that. That we have the entry point come in on 57, town-owned land, go over to town-owned land that's 191, and then 410 back to the park. It will take away a little bit of parking, but not much. Now, this bend, I agree, it takes away too much. Right here. I agree with this portion that comes near the road.
Show this out of cut.
So I had thought.
Right here, it takes a little too much.
I thought to move, to move it westward, is that what you're saying? Because I thought to move it westward here, where that little notion says, and that way it's completely not even bothering touching anything that is Cropper's.
You're saying the easement's right here.
Yeah, I know, but I'm saying, if we moved this way, we wouldn't be anywhere near what's there.
This isn't, this currently, the rendering is not on Cropper's.
Okay, that rendering is not.
That rendering is not on.
Essentially, we would abandon the easement, because we would no longer.
Correct.
Okay, then I'm okay with that.
As neither. And as you see, there is going to be a curb cut there for them to hopefully have access to the rear part of their property. The same way we're going to put curb cuts in to access future development of 57. I think it's the cleaner way, and if it's a no-go for the developer, I think the recommendation would still be, thank you, let's still work toward getting a solid contract, let's list the darn thing for sale. And this is what we're selling. But I think we need to hold firm on a couple of things that are really true to us, and that's keeping it on town land, getting it where we need to be.
You're willing to jeopardize the.
I hope it wouldn't, I think it's reasonable. I think this is a reasonable request. I really think, what I'm hoping is, is that this curve really caused the feathers to go up unnecessarily. That's what I'm hoping.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not willing to jeopardize the deal or over it, but that's, because we.
I think it's reasonable enough that we can overcome it, is what I'm saying.
And the Croppers could make it difficult for us.
Very.
If they insisted on getting more land in that, which we don't have.
Which could alter ultimately what we need to do as a town.
It's better to be neighborly and mercantile.
I mean, I'm hoping that this isn't a hard task.
The developer could negotiate this themselves.
What, what I said to the developer was, if you bring us a done deal saying that we can use the easement, and you all work out a monetary exchange for whatever that is, we'll entertain it. But the draft that I was given was, we'll take a little bit of your rear land and give it to them in exchange for it. And that's a no-go. But I think the offer still stands, if they want to negotiate on their own behalf and bring us a done deal, that's fine, but.
I just don't want that to be something that later comes back to be a thing, well, where they stop negotiating with each other and bring that to the town saying, yeah, I know what we talked about before, but I'm coming to you, and this is how I want to see it down the.
It needs to be clean. Needs to be clean. Alright, so let me make sure I'm understanding the group. We're in agreement that we're going to try our best to run, using 57's land back to the parcel of 191, curving over as quickly as we can to the town parcel 191 and 410, hugging the property line, not on 57.
And abandon the easement.
And abandon, the goal would be to, I don't want to say we're abandoning the easement, the goal would be to abandon the easement, once that is done. Is that a good understanding?
Okay.
Still, the offer stands, to Dean's point, that if the developer and Cropper can work out a deal, we're open to it, but it's got to be a package, like a final package. Alright. Cross-section easement for bicycle pedestrians, skateboards, vehicles, et cetera. So in our discussion, so if you look over to, looking at your piece of paper, the left side of the building that is the old industrial processing building, if you look to the left side where the railroad tracks are, this drawing does depict the Berlin Bike Way project. Keep in mind, our grant will not include this spur, right? But a future grant may include this spur. And we want to make sure that it's clearly denoted on our contract that we are using the railroad easement to put in this pathway, and that we understand that people, once they, not everybody is going to travel the pathway all the way to the back of the passive use section, and then go around the lagoon portion to get to the skate park. People may cross, right? And we don't want there to be a time where there's unreasonable obstacles that are placed on people being able to cross from one side to the other. Rightfully so, it works the same way, right? We want the developers' redevelopment of 57, we want traffic to be able to utilize the town-owned roadway, right? So it's a reciprocal exchange there, but we want it clearly denoted in the contract. Any objection to that by anybody, or any questions about that by this group?
If you don't give them a map, they will make one.
Right, the, for the pathway. In most areas, it's going to be 10 feet with a buffer, but keep in mind, the railroad has, what is it, 30 feet? They've already got that, so you can't develop it no matter what.
Right, exactly. So that sounds like it's, yeah.
It's just making sure it's there in the document.
Okay.
Alright. Let's see, legal description of the property for the contract. You'll see the draft contract doesn't have a real clear description of the legal boundaries of the property. I think here, we should also take a step back. It kind of coincides to the last item, which is the rear setback, but I want to get a sense from the group, did everybody get a chance to go out and take a look at the survey marker? Homework?
Yes.
Alright, with that, does everybody feel comfortable where that rear lot line is?
Yes, but I have a question.
Okay, good.
Well, moving into the setback, I have a question.
Kind of taking a booth right now, so.
Yeah, okay, cool. So, the, the draft, I want to make sure I understand this in my head. So, it says in the draft somewhere here about the, okay, so exhibit B contingencies letter I. I'll just read it, you don't have to go look. Their year, the rear yard setback to parcel 57 shall be increased to 75 feet for fixed structures. So if we're out there, and you have those red flags that are on the, you're walking in, on the left, there's the water tower, and then there's the red flags that go right across, which is going to be this line.
No, not that line, but, okay. It is not that line, it's, that line is further back. This was a, earlier, like, a long time ago, we discussed this. This, I think, goes further back than what is denoted here on this drawing.
So where the red flags are?
The survey out there now is correct.
Okay, so where the red flags are now, we're talking about moving 75 feet towards the entrance.
And it would not be in the land staying with the town of Berlin, 75 feet, it would be no building, a structure within that 75. That was the original discussion, but if you look down at the bottom where it says rear setback parcel 57, that was, you know how you have your HVAC company, but you're not really an HVAC technician? I was being a planner when I'm not really a planner.
That is not the order we're going to use there.
So, this confused me, because it said increase, which made me believe that that was further.
No, no, no.
Like towards the ponds.
We're going to change that altogether, because there's a better way to approach that, that's more planner-friendly, and that's to add a covenant to the property and make sure that we have a clear understanding of what the development envelope's going to be, or what's going to be developed, so that we then make sure that we're not hitting that 75-foot goal that we all have, but in a way that doesn't create an imbalance in the town code and zoning structure.
But it is a setback.
We're going to be achieving the same thing, it's just going to be called something different. And the other nice part is, is that in the future, if something needs to be changed, it's easier for this body to work with the developer to make those changes. Whereas the rear setback, we would just be creating a one-off, and it's not really, it's not the best way to do it. And it was done by yours truly, but it's still not the best way to do it. Kind of like jack service in my HVAC.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's alright.
So, what I'm hearing is, everybody's okay with the rear lot line that you saw marked by DBF? And in turn, are we okay with kind of taking a different approach to kind of achieve the same result? Which is the last bullet that I have on.
What were the white flags?
I don't have an answer to that.
Is that this, is that this line?
The furthest line back.
On top of the hill.
That is the rear setback. The furthest line back on top of the.
Is it the real setback or the one that you're calling?
No, 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 the, hold on one second. The furthest marker you saw back on top of the hill was the rear property line.
That's on the left.
That's what I'm saying, that is your rear property line.
But I'm talking about the little flags that are on the pathway towards the picnic table. What is that? Because there's a stake there as well.
I'm not sure.
I'm not sure.
The furthest flag...
I don't know what you're talking about, that was the one on the left.
Is that marking the side?
It goes, like, there's, I don't know, maybe 10 of them, and they just...
Do they do children or something?
And then, and then there's a, there's a stick there that says P O L, and it's orange straight pink.
It probably would be P Q L.
P Q L.
Quarter line. We always, always, always borrow property, so...
Okay, so, for this discussion, we're just focusing on the red flags.
So what is, what is C Q L? Because I can't hear down there.
Property corner. Corner line, property corner.
That's what I was told.
Go ahead.
When I called the surveyors, I didn't know what they were doing.
Sorry.
Yeah.
All right, so then, just as you asked my question.
All right. Legal description of the property, we talked about, it's going to include the boundaries once the, once the roadway's actually, actually depicted. It'll have all of this describing, hey, look, you go to this flag, or this marker, and this is what you're legally selling, what we're legally selling, and what somebody's legally buying. All right, insurance during the due diligence or study period, we need to talk about, or have language in the contract that says that while somebody's coming in and doing their due diligence period, that they are insured, and that they also list the town as a sub-insure on the, on the policy. Just language that needs to be in the contract. This conditions as-is, where it, where it is, and indemnification during the due diligence period basically says this is what you're buying, and agree to be buying, and then the indemnification is just, I feel like we had phrased that a little bit differently, but maybe not. Maybe that's an old topic, I don't know. But being honest to say, we're just going to make sure that there's a, roles and responsibilities are well-defined in that, in that process. I think that's everything, at least on my end, so I'll take any questions from the council.
So, some of this is new stuff. What we have in here is a old contract from the summer.
Correct.
It sounds like we will be creating a new contract with the help of a new entity for this transaction.
So, yes and no. We're going to use the substance that we can use in the draft that we have currently, and add some more cleaner language about items that we just discussed.
Correct.
So, it might look a little different, but it should cover a lot of the same basis.
So when, when, when do you anticipate? I guess what I'm asking, I don't, I'm not sure how I'm asking this, what, what is your, what is the administration's timeline on working with the developer on this discussion that we had tonight?
I would like to have a draft contract, I would say, definitely like...
Real estate?
Yeah, but definitely about January, the start of January, after we come back from the holiday. But ideally, if we can get it moving quicker than that, I'd like to do that, but you don't mind.
I think, I think the biggest holdup is going to be, you have to straighten out what you want to do with the road, because you can't have the legal description...
Correct.
Until that happens.
And, and with that, I think that's the, one that's going to require the most time and consideration. Outside of that, the other items should be somewhat easier to put together. It's just going to be trying to get to something that we all agree to.
So we didn't really talk about the cost estimate for the road.
Want to get there? I wanted to just make sure we're good with the items that we've discussed so far.
But all of these discussions, we can't still peg, even if it's moratorium.
Absolutely.
Sitting up here. Okay, just make a...
This is...
Yeah, I mean, all the law, we can still peg, except for...
And we're still, please keep in mind, we're still, to Steve's point earlier, we want to keep this deal together.
Okay.
But we just want to make sure that in the process of that, that we, we protect the town's interests and we make it clean, right, all the way around. So that's really what we're trying to do, is make it better, so that things can move along more quickly, once we actually have the contract up and running. All right, to that point, let's get to the cost. So, the roadway, Steve's Highway to nowhere, is going to cost roughly $1,100,600 to construct, but all in estimate at this time is roughly 1.4, 1.5 million dollars. So with that, how do we pay for it, right? The nice part is, is that by having it designed and on paper, we don't necessarily need to build it right away. Because a lot of this, a pathway already exists, right? There might be pavement already, there's a hard surface that should be there in many respects already. So, we're going to chunk it out, right? The first and foremost, we're going to need to make it from Old Ocean City Boulevard back to the Public Works and Skate Park, as, as much as we can in full capacity. That's our number-one priority.
And keeping in mind that there's going to be heavy construction going on, so you're not, you don't want to put in a final, or clean road at this point.
And with that, once we've got the roadway design, once we're working on repurposing one, parcel 57, and building the Public Works and Skate Park, and all of those things, we're going to also use this estimate to leverage, hopefully some grant opportunities that exist, whether it's streetscapes, whether it's other items, to be able to grant fund some of this, if possible.
You're hoping that's a possibility, but...
If not, we've got...
You also conveyed to the public that, you know, we're selling this parcel to reduce the debt, certain pieces of property, and now you're spending $285,000 more to make it all happen.
So, so keep in mind with this, right?
The one further than that.
Well, not, we've already done it, and I'm going to explain how. So, the ditch is to hopefully use this to, to pay off some of the debt, right? That's the sale proceeds.
Correct.
Now, with that, we've also floated a bond for Public Works. It needs water and sewer infrastructure, we knew that, right? We know that it needs electric service, we know that we need a way to get there. So, that's been floated as a bond already. So we need to, together, once we have the signed deal and whatever's being done with 57, we need to evaluate interest rate for interest rate, what's the best way to approach that? Do we maybe use some of this cash flow to make the Public Works funds go a little further? Do we use some of this cash flow for the road and, and pay down a little bit more, maybe with a higher interest rate on the Public Works building? But that's a strategy we're going to need to discuss. But in some ways, we've already done the harvest part, which is already going to debt for that pro, this, basically, you know what I mean? Like, we've got to build this no matter what. We could talk about maybe simplifying Steve's road to only have sidewalk on one side, or maybe a four-foot sidewalk, not a five-foot sidewalk, but at that point, I think we're really going to start parsing pennies for what?
But you can also get the pre-work, you can put in the water, sewer, electric.
Correct.
Without having to build the actual road.
Correct.
With the bond money.
Well, yeah, that's notable by the property.
Keep in mind, we don't have a price tag on the Public Works building, that's the actual...
Correct. But, I mean, those are all options, right? What I'm saying is, I'm not, I'm not ready to commit to one of those yet. I think we need to take them in stride, right? One, the goal is, we're moving the Public Works building forward, right? So, we know that project's moving forward, we know the skate park's moving forward, we're trying to redevelop and sell 57. We've got to keep in mind that if we want a road, this is what it costs, but if there's another way to achieve it, we of course want to get there, right?
Right. I just don't want to go to the public in the springtime and say, oh, we're going to have pennies on your tax...
No, I don't think we're there. I really don't.
To pay for this road, you know?
I really don't think we're there. And it's not a contingency on selling the project, right? We're not saying to any developer that we're going to build this roadway, you're going to buy this, and one of our contingencies is to build a roadway. That's why it's staying on town-owned land, we are only selling 57. All right, anything we haven't covered? Mary, anything I've missed? Gaskell, anything I've missed? Okay, all right. What are we doing? So now, let's see. All right, okay. See, I had to start early, thinking we were going to take forever. You all have been on good behavior. I might have let you out early.
You want to ask more questions?
No.
Do you want to ask more questions?
No. Up next is to item five, which are reports from the town administrator and department heads.
I do not have anything this evening, but I do think you have a couple of department head reports.
All right.
Sorry, I'm catching up.
It's okay, oh. Yes. These are for economic and community development, right? Isn't that what we have in front of us?
Yes.
So do you want, are you, are you going to explain them? Do we want to...
Oh, certainly.
Go ahead. Now, hold on, am I correct? I'm getting looks from Sarah.
No, you're right.
Okay, all right. Okay, good, thank you. Go ahead, Ivy.
So, we have won two awards at the State of Maryland Tourism Coalition Summit last week, that's the conference that I was attending. And our first award was, I'll start with the Berlin Farmers Market. And the Berlin, the Berlin Farmers Market has won the best, not just best farmers market, this is the best event award, small budget category in the entire state.
Okay.
Yeah. This is something, you know, we started the farmers market, what, seven years ago? We had a community meeting, we met with the farmers, we figured out, we definitely still need to have a farmers market when the other market closed down, and it, it's just grown so much over the last seven years, from Artisans Green to behind J&amp;M, and increasing it to Main Street, and this year, just, it exploded. We added the petting farm and the free art projects for kids, and doubled the amount of vendors, included more breweries and distilleries, just, just everything that we did, they, they liked it, they took notice. The economic impact on the entire area, people were staying longer in their hotels in Ocean City, because they wanted to set a special day to come here to Berlin for the farmers market on Sundays, and it turned out to be the business's busiest day of the year. Period, some days. So it's a testament to the entire, and went through our, well, they didn't know that at the time, but moving it through October was a, was a great success, and it will continue that way. And it's, it's just a testament to the community that show up every day and support the farmers. And, yeah, I, I couldn't, I was just floored, and, and there was a lot of people from Ocean City there who were just, we loved the farmers market, and so many people wanted to talk about the, you know, the little small town that is just growing and growing in a good way. So, but we're really pleased with this, so thank you. And then...
Congratulations.
Thank you. So then we won the Best Use of Social Media Award for the Berlin Bubble Project, and what, what people don't realize is that we didn't, we didn't pay, pay for any advertising for that project at all. It was strictly Instagram and Facebook, and I came up with some rhymes and some poems and put it out there, and it caught people's attention. And the initial video that we did, the initial reel that we did, got more than 25,000 views on just Instagram alone, and then on Facebook, it received 18,000 views, and then it just continued to grow. So, we won the award for Best Use of Social Media for that, for that project, just because of our organic posts that, that really made this project successful, besides all the other things that made it successful. And Jeff Offser, when he said, hey, how about if we, if I donate some bubbles, could you hide them and create a website for them, and do all the marketing for them? And I said, sure! So, and here we are now, the Berlin's won two state tourism awards, so it's, you know, it's a testament to you all for allowing me to do my job, the openness, and, you know, we all have crazy ideas, and so I appreciate that very much. And, you know, Mary, all the support, just from, from everyone, so thank you.
Congratulations, Steve.
Well, Ivy, in these endeavors, there always has to be someone that is the lead, and I would just, on behalf of the council, I would just like to thank you for your leadership.
Thank you. I thank you. Any other departments that I'm overlooking that I...
I've got a question, probably. Yeah, it's out of the way, congratulations, and those are, of course, we should win, but...
Of course we should win.
But the question, did we apply for that, or was that...
We were nominated.
Nominated, okay, I was just curious of the process.
Yeah.
We were nominated by somebody, not the town of Berlin? We didn't nominate ourselves, I guess, or, it's okay, we did. I was just curious of the process. But now, I think it's fantastic, because like I said, I feel like, well, I sold...
Here's a quote for you, never, always remember this, you never get what you want...
Right.
Unless you go after it.
That was very exciting.
Ivy, I just want to say, the music on the farmers market was a beautiful addition, loved hearing it every week.
Yeah, and thanks to the Worcester County Arts Council, because I applied for grant funding to be able to pay those musicians.
Yeah. Very nice. And while we're, while we're on this, Wells, you're coming up on your 10-year...
My 10-year anniversary.
Town of Berlin work anniversary, so thank you so much for that.
Thank you.
Not too long ago, not so long ago, we took you away from another place we shall not take in public, right? But, no, it's not that, we love them, but I'm just saying, we don't want to say that we're taking them to people, but we, we want to, or as to Steve's point, because we're so awesome.
Surely we should clap for that.
Yeah, 10 years, 10 years. All right, any other departmentals that need to report out? Okay, any council questions for Mary or departmental, department heads? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to comments from the public. Anyone from the public that would like to address the mayor and council? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to comments from the council, we'll start now with President Barrow.
Obviously, email from, from a resident that had concerns...
We got to share.
He was taking it from...
Sharing is caring.
She should make that one a share, everybody else. Yeah, you all have your own. We're done with this.
Zach just takes it. We're going to have a duet.
I, I, I received an email, Jack and I received an email from, from a resident with concern of sidewalks, sidewalks on both sides of Old Ocean City Boulevard, especially as it, I guess it would be east side of 113, going toward 50. His comment was, was that he cannot walk in town from his residence, using a sidewalk. And his concern was, when is something going to happen over there with sidewalks?
So we'll, we'll share it. I don't like sharing.
That's your, oh, you can't buy your gavel.
I know, but I don't like that. I don't like that one, I like the smaller one there. Jay's got to, Dean and I shared, see what we're right. So, the, the long and short of, so, Old Ocean City Boulevard, we put in our consolidated transportation plan request each year, at least for the past two years, I know, that we, we've segmented it out, right? Because if you head from Main Street, if you head west on Old Ocean City Boulevard, more residential, right? You head east on Old Ocean City Boulevard, it's more commercial. So we segmented that out. We are exploring pathways with S H A on how we overcome that, because it is a state highway. Now, if I'm understanding your question, more, you're, you're looking more around like 113 and from, in front of the hospital, so we do have some sidewalks there.
Yes.
The daycare apartments is across the street. But ironically, and we've brought this, Patty actually brought this to the State Highways Administration when we were meeting with them, you have sidewalks on the hospital side, but all the homes that are over in the daycare apartments, no sidewalks, and you have sidewalks on the hospital side, but all the homes that are over in Decatur Apartments, no sidewalks and no crosswalks. So we're looking at ways that we can leverage some grant funds with S H A, knowing that it's their area, right? To be able to help make some of these improvements, kind of gets to the point that we brought up with the local delegation members when we were here. Projects that have additional funding sources that aren't just state funding usually get hired. Wait, so how do we generate it, right? And I know we talked about them as a potential idea, speed cameras along the major highways. At least in some certain instances where we can improve some of that. And the reason we do that is because there's precedent in the state and because it creates that pot of money that is then sitting in the comptroller's office, it doesn't come to us. The funds go to the comptroller's office. And when we say, hey, look, we've got a transportation issue that's safety related, that's on a state highway and we want this project completed, they're gonna say, great, you and the 157 municipalities in Maryland and some of the other special taxi districts, you know a lot of those things. But then we can say, but wait, we have a pile of money that's sitting over here that can help leverage it. So they know that it's an issue, we brought it to their attention. We're looking at some pathways that we can hopefully overcome that. But we're in the queue, you know what I mean? And we are the squeaky wheel. Go ahead Patty, am I overlooking something?
No, no, well, the one, that area that you're speaking about is an ongoing area of big concern for me. I take pictures of people walking on that road with strollers and grocery bags and it's appalling to me. And I spoke to the CEO of the hospital about it because people come from Decatur Farms, cross the road there to get on the little piece of sidewalk to go to the forever taking crosswalk that's coming to get to the gas station to go on and then cross back over to the food line. So they gotta go across the road, up the hospital, across the highway, back across the road.
It makes those sound-
With their baby stroller or their walker. And we took Mr. Winkler, the federal highway liaison for state highway, and walked him through that and showed him the senior center that's there, that seniors should be able to get to, the Rite Aid where people get their drugstores, the food line, and, and they, and Mark Crampton District One and said, what are you gonna do about this? Personally, I don't feel the town of Berlin should have to apply for a grant to fix a problem that the state highway created in their design, but that's just my personal-
Drop the mic.
I agree with Patty, you like it.
Tell me if I'm wrong when I say this, because that the housing development that is Decatur Apartments is like a HUD, it's a lower income or income-based housing, is that an area that we could also reach out to the state housing authority or HUD or whomever that entity is? Because it is senior housing, it is income-based, and it also houses special needs and whatnot where they could also be a partner that helps to cover some of that sidewalk, even if it just leads out of the development, right out into the frontage where those children and seniors hop onto a bus?
So the, so the grant for reconnecting neighborhoods that you already approved today says, cross the highway and create a network so that people can get from where they are to where they need to be. Because it doesn't do really any good to create one bridge or one crossing if you can't get from all the things you just described to all the things you just described. And so my sense, working with Sarah and the mayor and Mary, is that the community engagement that happens, the conversations we have with the community in Decatur, you know, in Decatur Farms, at the hospital, in the Grace, you know, the-
Shirley Grace Recovery.
Grace and Recovery, all of those people become part of the conversation to say, and we give them little pins and say, I start here and I want to go here, and I start here and I want to go here. And that we, with state highway, looking at the table, create those maps to where those sidewalks could be. Because maybe it's along, it's along the east side of 113 that they come out of Decatur Farms and down. Or maybe it's crossing, they don't like to have a lot of crossings. What the state highway says is we don't want to create a crosswalk and then a light so that you got cars all backed up, you know, by the dog food plant and the veterinary. But, but there's a way to solve it and it's a problem that they created and so they should help us fix that.
And we were, that's how we got there, right? We said, we said you ran a highway straight through a town, you know what I mean? Like, we now, you create, to Patty's point, you created the problem, let's work together to figure out the solution.
We sent a flag to our friends at District One as well.
We did, start your morning and end your day with us.
Your aunt is, uh, rendition, she, she used Decatur Farms, but it's Decatur Apartments.
Decatur Apartments, sorry, I'm sorry.
All right, anything else, Vice President Burrell?
Not yet.
Well, Patty's not being wrong, Decatur Farms does have that symbol.
We're here, we're not wrong.
Nothing, nothing. Okay, I hear Councilmember Nichols.
Oh, here she goes, I've got a couple minutes. So, first off, Ivy, kudos to your department and your forethought with, working with all the entities to make the farmers market what it was. Because when I hear my 14-year-old FaceTiming with her 18-year-old sister who is in Hampton, Virginia, saying, so what do you do now on Sundays when there's no farmers market? Like, how do you spend your Sundays? Girl, I have nothing to do, I have nowhere to go and nothing to see. So, you know what I mean, hearing that from teenagers at different stages of their lives is really interesting to me because that was the conversation I heard on Sunday. Like, I have no idea what I'm gonna do with my Sundays from now on. Kudos to you guys for that. They truly, as teenagers, enjoy that entertainment and that's exactly what it was, that event every Sunday. It was an event, we could, um, the Jeff Otser hiding, peek-a-boo, finding events, not just the bubble, but then the glow-in-the-dark things. Oh my gosh, makes you want to just be out in town all night and all day looking for something. So those things, those creations, those ideas, those are cool to see.
The only thing that Ivy did have to put out the word that they are not, in fact, hidden in businesses, flowers. We stop looking for them in the flowers.
Stop digging up people's flower beds, yes.
It was easy to rhyme with flower pots, it was easy to create a rhyme.
Now, tell me this, did I miss the glow-walk because that's already-
Yes, that was last Friday.
Yeah, that's what I thought. I mean, with, I will say this and not to take away from the town of Berlin, but I am super crazy hyped with Decatur and our football team right now. So my Fridays belong to Snow Hill, I do not, I can't give it to anybody else but Decatur Football and my number 33. So whatever goes on on Fridays, you will not see me as long as it is still football season.
We're gonna get another state champ?
Huh?
We're gonna get another state championship?
I mean, let's put it out in the atmosphere, that's the, that's the vibe.
Being superstitious, everyone.
But I will say, I will say this though, good Lord's willing to creek don't rass, as long as Decatur still is a contender, everybody comes to Berlin. So that is the exciting part about that, even though that has nothing to do with town hall, but it does because that's Berlin. I was just wondering about that part.
You had told us all your other arguments.
Yeah, Fridays can't, and even in Snow Hill, like working in Snow Hill last week, their little league, their PB league went to football, whatever, and they were like, you're not wearing Snow Hill dollars! And I go, no, I, I'm sorry guys, I'll wear gray shoes and burgundy underneath, but I will wear blue and white on top. But, those things being said, I will say this, now that we are all back here, we're sworn in, we're beyond all of those election things, ours, the bigger thing, the school board things, guys, it is so great to be literally back in our house, like, sitting here together, working on things to do within our town of Berlin. So kudos to all of those people who played a part in making these things happen. And I know that was October, but boy, it was a fuzzy election season for all the parts. Now that all of the dust has settled, here we are, we'll actually get some work done.
Moving forward. We've got some work to do too.
Yeah.
We've got some work to do. All right, thank you. Councilmember Horace?
Uh, just one thing, again, kudos to Ivy and crew for the farmers market. I was honored to partake, participate in an event Saturday night here in town. And a lot of the folks there were from Delaware. And they, they came to me and they said, oh, we come down, we love Berlin, you know, we come down, we love, they, more than once I heard, we come down for the farmers market. And of course, I tried to talk them into moving down here, but aside from that, that's, you know, that's a huge kudos to you and your shop and the town of Berlin. So just wanted to share that with everyone and that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Green?
I'd just like it at 6:00 PM start, I'd like for us to consider that.
I'm all thinking about the first staff, I mean, we talked about moving forward. I'm open to that, I think a lot of us are. Yes, because keep in mind, a lot of these folks get in early-
Right.
-and then have to stay late, it's a long day. We should have come to many certain things.
I'd just see my kids.
I have a motion.
That's my comment.
I have a motion on you. I have a motion by Councilmember Green to start all future meetings, with the exception, there is one meeting that we cannot. And the meeting that we cannot, um, start at 6:00 is the one immediately following the election. It does stay in the town charter, we have to start that at 7:00 PM. Not at all, it does. All other meetings-
I'm gonna just send the next regular meeting-
Specify the time.
We can talk about the 6:00, you can't, you don't know that.
I don't know.
I'm gonna erase that.
But I've done, if you've not noticed, I've done my research on whether we can start earlier, so.
No, I like it, I think it's, I love to hear it, that's great, huh? I'd say it's better for all of us.
There are changes we need to make to the election code, so we might be able to-
So if regular meetings start at 6:00?
Executives would start at 5:00, that's right. If needed, or 5:30.
Yeah, I think we probably, since I've been on council two years, maybe have four, close session meetings, I think. So we don't meet very often.
We try not, we try to use those as needed.
Yeah, exactly.
But you have a motion on the floor for 6:00 PM, I want to entertain X. Second by Councilmember Horace, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, all future meetings will start at 6:00.
Can we talk about that, can we talk about these executives then? If we're talking 6 o'clock start times, can we work on executives, if, if we work on executives either being right before or possibly after, because of, we're talking about 5:00, because there are some times that we have to do executive and our meeting is at 7:00 traditionally, sometimes we're doing a 6 o'clock meeting. So if you're saying 4 o'clock, I can't-
And we'll do- And what we'll do, what we'll do is we'll put you on the brief and we'll see if it's live. No, but we hear you, we're cognizant of that.
Okay.
Um, if we're needed, we will, we'll try our best to pull with brute if it's an earlier start time than 5:00.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I think that's the best part, let's just stop. Let's stop now and just end on a good note.
No, you have, you have one more.
I know, I've got several actually, so, I've got, uh, Councilmember Green, anything else? You're ending on a high note.
Oh, I don't know.
Kate, you just raised a good point, is the meeting time change effective immediately?
Yes, immediately.
Yes.
They, they actually make it as our discretion immediately. Um, all right.
Superman, save the day.
All right, calm down for this.
What did you say Ivy, you don't get what you want?
It's true, you gotta go after it.
All right, agenda item number eight, mayor's office comments, Sarah, anything we need?
I was gonna ask if we could start meetings at 6:00?
Great minds think alike.
I just wanted to remind everyone that we have the most adorable garden flags available for sale, $30. Um, all the proceeds go to support the community center and-
Are they, can we buy them from you tonight?
Yes, if you'll come downstairs with me.
Holiday gifts, excellent holiday gifts.
And I'm gonna be talking at our merch meeting tomorrow, um, working with merchants who will be participating in the Marion marketplace, so we might can work with them to get the, um, flags out during the Marion marketplace in December.
Very nice, anything else? Okay, comments from the mayor? Calls from the mayor? Green lights for veterans, great success, I want to thank all of our department heads, Sarah, thank you for helping with that. And Tim and his crew really helped spearhead that. I even saw some of our local residents and businesses doing the green light for veterans, so it was really nice to see. Um, we have the tree decorating that's upcoming, what is it, the 21st?
The first, with the reggae of the 21st.
The tree gets delivered on Monday.
Correct, tree's delivered on Monday and, um, and that is a hoopla in itself. And then we also have the decorating, which is not really open to the public, but it is an internal, like, team building thing that we like to do, and council, of course, is involved in that. Um, 11 o'clock.
Thursday at 11 o'clock.
Is the primary date. Uh, town offices will be closed, so whichever day, hopefully the 21st because of the weather's gonna cooperate with us.
They could use the rain too.
Well, yes, but it's raining on Friday.
It did rain, yes.
Don't rain next Friday.
Um, all right, so we covered green light for veterans, tree decorating, um, rules of order. So I have a little one that should be coming, hopefully, tonight. Yeah, we're a couple days overdue, but definitely on Friday, we have an induction date of Friday morning. So with that, you will likely be presiding over a couple meetings in my absence. In discussions with the town attorney, town administrator, rules of order don't really cover the, whether or not the vice president has a vote when presiding. I would like our rules of order to update and reflect that the presiding officer does not have a vote unless there is a tie. That would serve as the tiebreaker. Is everybody in consensus on that?
Yes.
Okay, so the rules of order will reflect a 6:00 PM start time except for when we swear on new members.
We'll get that fixed.
And that we, um, and that we have a term, really, this is the only thing we've ever changed, term limits for the vice president reelections every two years. And now that the presiding officer, if it's not the mayor, would not have a vote during that time. All right, that's clean. Now, uh, let's see, Columbus Day. So we received a constituent request, I think it went to everybody, about our holidays that we have. Our town handbook calls it Columbus Day, the question was, why do we call it Columbus Day and not Indigenous People's Day? And that's because the federal government still calls it Columbus Day and we recognize the federal holidays. But we did have that question come up, so I wanted to ask the group if there's any passion, one way or the other, Columbus Day is what we currently have, Indigenous People was what we were asked to consider?
I will also add that technically, federal holiday, excuse me, federal holiday is called Washington's Birthday, but we referred to it as President's Day for a long time. So it's, it's not as if we're-
Strict on that.
Right.
How about we put a slash?
How about we don't call it Indigenous People's Day?
So I've got, Councilmember Nichols would like it to be Indigenous People's Day.
Can I see the listing?
And the federal government regarding holiday names actually allows local, uh, local forms of government to make their own decisions on these things, so it's not, we won't have the FBI knocking on our door.
You called it this. Did you have a-
Gosh, I don't have a lot of passion for this one, so I'm going to go with it.
Um, I think that we can do it by consensus, but it is gonna be an amendment to the handbook.
Yeah.
So maybe a motion would be best. Do you want to make a motion?
Oh, I'm making a motion to change that title from Columbus Day to Indigenous People's Day.
So a motion by Councilmember Nichols, second by Vice President Burrell to change Columbus Day on the town, um, holiday schedule that's depicted in the handbook and online, from Columbus Day to Indigenous People's Day. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, let the record reflect the votes you had on the second. All right, we'll make the change.
So town holidays, John, include the day after Thanksgiving, correct?
They do.
What is that called?
The day after Thanksgiving.
Yeah, we give that one.
No, uh, no, you are right though, there is, there is a designation for the day after Thanksgiving. It's not a holiday, I can't think what it's called, but it's a year on or something.
Yeah. It's called, that's the day, Thanksgiving.
All right.
I'm sorry.
I think that's everything on my end, so.
Best wishes for a safe, uh, life.
Thank you. Thank you.
Keep it, I can't wait to see this guy. So probably driving when he's born.
What's that?
So probably driving when-
I thought you said, I'll be driving when he's born, I said, please don't. I've done that a couple times, I feel, I don't feel like doing it.
We do not want that, we will be born driving and talking, because this guy, we've been waiting for him for a minute.
Well, um, my poor wife.
And then I'm over.
Hope you're ready, man, he's gonna be coming over here, you got enough room for two more pictures?
Native American Heritage Day.
Although-
I knew, I knew there was something, yeah.
Although somebody did say, is this, they asked, is it gonna be the first baby born in office? I said, I don't know, but I've looked at the pictures, I would not like to jump to conclusions. But looking in the hallway, I don't, I don't know any hours that- I just said, you know, I'm gonna guess probably- I mean, I'm just saying, somebody asked a question, I don't, I don't know, I just looked in the hallway, I'm gonna say no. All right, any comments from the press? No?
Got two of them.
Steve, what'd you do? Do I have two?
I don't know, um, I don't-
Are you from the press as well?
Yes.
And who are you with?
Uh, new publication, Ocean Pines, called Rock Edition.
Ah, very nice. All right, so hold on, now that's, you're gonna have us asking questions to you now. So this is called Rock Edition?
Yeah.
And it's in Ocean Pines, covering Berlin?
Yeah, it covers Ocean Pines, Berlin and West Ocean City.
Very nice.
And the first issue is going online, supposed to be online by November 15th, which is Friday, I believe.
I was just gonna ask if it was print or online or what?
It's gonna be, uh, online for the first few issues and then I think in the next year, we're gonna try to get it to print.
So then in the nature of the sense that you are based in Ocean Pines, but you have our zip code and, uh, all of, you have the main postal, you're really Berlin, you know that, right? So you're gonna feature Berlin, um, in the, in the upper part of your new website, right? I'm just asking.
I can do.
Sounds like a great idea.
Above the bowl.
What's your name, sir?
Giovanni Guido. Juvon Guido.
So, very nice, very nice.
Nice to meet you.
Hang out.